Your clock.
I'm going.
Actually fifteen seconds.
These are high times.
Wow, this is actually.
We're locked.
Yeah.
We're locked.
We're locked.
All right, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Alicia, can you do a quorum check, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Fennell is present. Councilmember Contreras is present. Councilmember Rennenbaum is present. Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Young is present. Councilmember McConaughey is present. Absent is Mayor Moss.
Thank you. All right, if everyone would stand, we will have a moment of silence. Unless you have someone doing your question. Have a moment of silence. Thank you. And Eric, would you mind leaving us some questions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first item is public comments, but we have not had anyone sign up to speak in the public comments, so we will move on to the consent agenda. The only item on consent is approval of city council meeting minutes, August 27th workshop, and regular meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the regular agenda items is to consider an act on adopting. We need to open the public hearings. Yes, we need to open the public hearing at 7:01 PM. And we have one person on our agenda to speak for the public hearing, and that is Ms. Val Beurling. Did you want to speak, or do you want me to read your statement? Okay. If you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone.
I just wanted to thank everyone of the council members who responded to the email that I sent with questions about the budget items, and I appreciate your responses. I have a few more that I'm going to follow up on, but other than that, you have it on record, and you have my blessings. Again, thank you for Ranch House Road. I can't wait till we can have a place where my car didn't get beat up.
Right, thank you. Right, I think we have no other speakers signed up, so I will close the public hearing at 7:02 PM. We are considering an act acting, item number one, ordinance 798-19, an ordinance providing for the adoption of the City of Willow Park municipal budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Do we have any discussions regarding any comments? Brian, did you want to?
We've pretty much have had, we've had two, three now, public hearings, two workshops, and we've had very little change at all since the original document after we had public safety issues hammered out. I'd like to stress again, roughly 94% tax dollars are going to public safety, and so that was one of the concerns that we had at our Grand Bridge Conference, was try to increase public safety staffing. And so we're going to try to make that happen in the next few budget cycles. The tax rate overall will stay the same, as it says, and this is maybe on number two, but we'll take care of one and two at the same time, as far as my comments. Your INS rate's .2449, and your maintenance operation is .2918, for a total of .5367. And we think this is a pretty good budget, and thank you for working with us, and thank you for coming and giving input. Thank you to the citizens and those who spoke at the workshops and given their input. We're ready to put this thing to bed.
All right, well, I will go ahead and read the ordinance, and then we can consider a motion. The ordinance is 798-19, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Willow Park, Texas, providing for the adoption of a municipal budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, providing that expenditures for said fiscal year shall be made in accordance with said budget, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances, providing a separability clause, providing a savings clause, and providing an effective date. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 798-19, Ezra.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
No.
Oh, a record vote.
Yay.
Is that all? Yay. Mr. Contreras?
Yay.
Mr. Rennenbaum?
Yay.
Myself? Yay. Mr. McConaughey?
Yay.
All right, part B of this is we need a motion to ratify the budget. Do I have a motion for ratifying the property tax increase of 6.2 reflected in the budget?
The wording needs to be explained.
Yes. Do we have a motion as presented? I will move to ratify the property tax increase of 6.2% reflected in the budget. My motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Second by Mr. McConaughey. Any discussion? Councilmember Fennell?
Yay.
Contreras?
Yay.
Rennenbaum?
Yay.
Yay? Young? McConaughey?
Yay.
All right. I like a wave.
Congratulations, fuck ass.
And the next item is to consider an act on adopting ordinance 799-19, an ordinance adopting an ad lorm tax rate and levy on assessed property not to exceed 0.5367 for 100 valuation for tax year 2019 for the City of Willow Park, Texas, including a levy debt for obligations and levy for maintenance operation consistent with the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget. The caption for the ordinance reads, "An ordinance levying the 2019 ad lorm taxes of the City of Willow Park, Texas, on all taxable property within the corporate limits of the city, not exempt by law, providing revenues for payment of current municipal expenses and for interest and sinking funds on outstanding City of Willow Park bonds, providing for enforcement of collection, providing for a separability clause, and providing an effective date."
We need to check the ordinance.
I will move to adopt the ordinance that adopts the property tax be increased by the adoption rate, by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.5367, which is effectively a 6.2% increase in the tax rate. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Rennenbaum? Do we have any discussion? All right. Councilmember Fennell?
Yay.
Contreras?
Yay.
Rennenbaum?
Yay.
Young? Yay. McConaughey?
Yay.
That passes. All right, the next item on the agenda is to consider an act on appointing five citizen members and up to four alternates to serve in the absence of one or more members to the Building and Standards Board for two-year terms. I believe we have three applications in front of us. That would be Val Beurling, Jerry Miller, and Marvin Glasgow. Do you have any comments about this? I think we've discussed for months trying to get appointments. We have up to five that we can appoint to the board and four alternates. We do think that we possibly have another application that's not before us.
Floating around somewhere.
Right, so.
We'll appoint them at the next council meeting, I guess.
Yes, we can appoint, once we have that application in front of us, we can appoint that. Do we have any discussion, comments regarding the board appointments?
Looking forward to this getting moving.
Yes.
Yes.
No comments. I think they're all good people.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to, I don't know what the motion should be.
I'd point the names. I would read out the names and move to approve those.
I move to approve Val de Beurling, Jerry Miller, Marvin Glasgow, reappointed to the board of the Building Standards Board with Father J. Atwood and Michael Caldwell as alternates. Is that?
We need.
We don't have applications. Yeah, we're waiting on applications, so do we?
Okay, so we only do Valda and Jerry and, okay. So I move that we appoint Val de Beurling, Jerry Miller, Marvin Glasgow to the Building Standards Board.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Contreras. Do we have any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous. Thank you. And we obviously are still seeking additional applications, so anyone that is interested.
Congratulations, Val.
There you go. You have an unpaid job.
Yeah.
All right, the next item is to consider an act on awarding a proposal for employee health benefits.
Nancy Johnson. Yes, with Tony Morris Agency, who is our insurance broker. Nancy, if y'all recall, we went with them about a year and a half ago.
Eighteen months.
And we went from a inferior insurance product to something that, speaking for all the employees, I think they all agree that it's, this is what we have now is far superior. And so we, our contract period was up, and so we're renewing that contract, and I'll let you take it from there.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to come before you. We went out for bids in August to see if there were any competitive bids that we could get for any of your products. We handle your, not only your health insurance, but also dental, vision, and life insurance. We asked for competitive quotes on all of those products. You did not get any competitive quotes on your health insurance, but you did, of course, get, other than Blue Cross, the incumbent carrier, and they gave you a very good renewal, which was only an increase, as you'll see on that front page, of 3.64%. So a very minimal increase. There were just some minor changes to the plan, some of which made them better even so, which is unusual. But anyway, overall, your medical plans are just rolling over with some really minor changes and a very little change in cost. If you'll turn to page two then, you'll see that we did get some competitive quotes on your life insurance. And so we got two companies, Oaks Securian and One America, both bid on your life insurance. And as you can see, the, your incumbent is Dearborn National, who of course also had a quote. There was no change with Dearborn because you're under a rate guarantee. Oaks Securian was more, and One America was just slightly less. I mean, we're talking, you know, about 40 something dollars per month, so very insignificant amount. But if you'll turn then to page three, you'll see furthermore, those companies also bid on the voluntary life insurance, which your employees purchase, and both of those companies that bid competitively were significantly more expensive than what your employees are paying now through Dearborn National. And Dearborn National, by the way, is Blue Cross Blue Shield. That is their life insurance arm. So pages three and four then are more of those life insurance rates for the voluntary life insurance. Overall, though, I'm recommending you stay with the incumbent Dearborn because the rates are better for your employees, and the savings to the city for the basic life is very insignificant. It's only about $40 a month, but your employees would end up paying a lot more if you were to move to one of those two companies. Page five then is your dental and vision. You, your incumbent is Ameritas. Ameritas gave you a quote. They actually did go up a little on your dental insurance, about 9%, but the vision stayed the same. Now, the city does provide dental insurance to the employees. Employees pay for their own dependents, but the, but the, the vision is voluntary completely, and the, the employees pay for that for themselves also. No one else bid on your vision and your dental. So my recommendation for all of these products is that you just stay with your incumbents and don't make any changes for this year.
Any questions? Any answers? Or Brian?
I think no issues with the incumbent then?
We have had zero issues with the incumbent. In fact, I think people are actually enjoying health insurance.
I was very glad to hear that.
For the record, and for those who cannot see at home, Chief West is smiling at that comment.
And we appreciate your business, we really do, and we, we feel like service is how we win your business. So I've gotten to know, I've known Brian for years, but I've gotten to know Candy pretty well, too, so we want to help y'all any way we can, whether it's claims, billing, whatever. I mean, there's a lot that as a broker we can do, and so don't hesitate to call on us.
Yeah, I do want to give Nancy and her team kudos, because, you know, as you go through the claim process, you know, we basically call Nancy, and Nancy walks us through it and says, you need to call this person, or she gets on the phone and she gets your, your bill taken care of for you. And it's, she's an advocate for the employees. She's an asset to the employees, and I just, I want to publicly thank you for the work that you do for our.
Appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your business.
Do we have a motion?
Do you have to name the company that we're approving?
I think we can just list the incumbents, keep the insurance unchanged?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion that we keep the insurance unchanged.
Second.
Do we have any discussions? All right, all in favor? Thank you. The next item is to consider an act on adopting a resolution, 2019-08, a resolution to approve the use of Hart Intercivic Verity, version 2.31, for use by Parker County Elections Administration, and absentee voting by mail, early voting by personal appearance, regular voting on Election Day, and provisional voting.
Because we contract with the county, when they, if we got new equipment, we would have to do this and say, oh, we adopt our own equipment. But because we contracted with the county and they made provisions to get new equipment this year, we have to adopt the resolution that says we accept their equipment, which has to be certified by the Secretary of State's office.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Alicia, or possibly Brian? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we adopt resolution 2019-08, Ezra.
Second.
Motion and a second by Rennenbaum? All right, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to consider an act on a one-year renewal contract with STW Inc. to continue to provide software services for financial payroll and utility billing management.
So we are going to, we are transitioning out of STW and into Ncode, but because of where the contract falls and that we're not prepared to fully transition over, we're waiting on the servers to get those things set up. We will have some overlap with STW and Ncode in this fiscal year, but we recommend that we go ahead and renew the contract with STW, and then when Ncode comes out, we will terminate the contract at the appropriate time.
Question, will we be able to recover any money?
I could sit here and tell you we're going to try. I, I would be, I'd be surprised if we did.
We're getting all the necessary training with Nco, well, never mind. We're not talking about Ncode.
All right, any other questions for Brian? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the one-year renewal contract with STW, Ezra.
All right, I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
How far into the year will we be before this cutover is?
I would say you're going to be into the second quarter, perhaps third quarter. Until.
In the summer? We're going into the summer, changing?
I'm going to try to do it before summertime.
Okay, I hope so.
Yeah.
So we can get the bugs out.
We will, we will try to do it before summertime.
Well, the contract doesn't allow us to early terminate.
Yeah, yeah.
But as far as getting the news elsewhere on.
We can ask.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, thank you. All right, I do not believe we've had any items that we need executive session for, so we will move on to mayor and council member comments. Do we have any comments by council?
I just wanted to thank the council and the staff for a great job in putting together the budget and all the work that went into that, so appreciate everything you guys did, so thank you very much.
And I had an item I wanted to ask about real quick. This has happened a couple of times since I've lived in Willow Park, where there's just a weird fluctuation with the water bill. And having, now that I'm on council, been on the other side of the desk and seeing that we have three or four different types of meters, and then we have a separate billing company, you know, that is separate. All the meters are owned by Badger, are made by Badger, but STW does all the billing. And I wanted to see if we could look into if there are some discrepancies between the different types of meters. So my house, the meter had to be replaced because there was a pressure issue, and it has a smart meter. And my bill was, it was higher, but I have a pool. It was expected. But there are some people who've had, who have bills who are only on a quarter acre lot, and they're, they were higher than mine was, and they hadn't changed their watering schedule or anything like that. And so there just seems to be, in my mind, just with deductive reasoning, that perhaps there's a ghost in the machine, because if we have three or four different types of meters, perhaps there's an anomaly going on there. Because I also called, I called another resident who lives off of Crown, and his house is only two or three years old, and he's, his, his bill was fine. It was, it was expected. However, houses that were built, you know, there are some houses, like in my neighborhood, and then like in Stagecoach, that the bills were, it was a huge fluctuation. So is there any way that we can maybe look into that, so that way it doesn't happen again? Sorry.
No, no, you're fine. You're fine. We have cell meters, what you would call your smart meter. We have cell meters. Our ultimate goal is to replace all those meters, and that was the plan until the well situation came about.
Yes.
And we decided it was probably best to get the well situation taken care of before the meters. We got a quote from Badger to replace roughly 1,800 meters in town. That would almost get us at 100% capacity correct on cell reads. And that would get to, 1,800 meters plus installs about 650,000. I'm unsure, I think we might be able to pay for that with cash, but I'm not certain how much, there, there might be a little bit of, of some, some funding that we'll have to find to do that. But the, the goal is ultimately get those cell meters in. And what it does is it gives you the app, and you can get on there and you can log.
Yeah, that's really nice.
What we've discovered is, is that, and just in Willow Park, but it's not exclusive of Willow Park, it's everywhere, no two water bills are the same, just like no two water customers are the same. And so we've had, we've had a lot of success with people who've had the cell meters. They've come in, we've shown them their usage, and then they, you know, they, they've kind of identified what their issue is, and they go make, they take corrective action. I would encourage the people you talk to to email us or call us, and, and we will, we'll work with them. You know, our goal is to get it right, and so that's, that's what we're going to try to do, without knowing who or what or the situation or whatnot.
Oh, I understand.
It's hard for me to, to hear, but I'd be more than happy to visit with them at a later date.
So, good question, Brian.
Yes.
Relating to Amy, so.
Related to Amy?
No, relating to her question.
Oh, I thought you were just going to ask about her water bill.
So, for, for the cell meters, for the meter reading, it's automatic, right?
Yes.
And it's always the same number of days in between readings?
It, it measures every hour, correct? And then it measures like the fifteenth of every month is when we pull the number, right? Fifteenth at midnight or whatever? Yeah.
So, any given year, it may be one day, a one-day variance?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah. And what that does is, and I don't want to mention, we had a customer come in last week, and she had a cell read, and she said, I've never, you know, I don't use this much water, I don't use this much water. And Diana literally flips the monitor around, and you can see your hourly usage. And so she had three days in particular week where her usage was high. And she said, you know, I wasn't here. I wasn't here those days. And we're like, okay, well, somebody, you know, you're using water. And she goes, well, the only thing is my husband was there all three days. And so we went to the next week, same thing, there, you know, and so she walked out, and I'm pretty sure the, the husband had a start talking to. I'm trying to add humor to that, but, but you, you see that a lot.
And the cell meters aren't the issue. That's what we're having an issue with. It's, it's our customers in the meantime.
And I'll, and I'll tell you this, when we replace new meters, then any water guy worth his salt, and Raymond certainly is, you, we, new meters are far more accurate than the old ones. So when we come in and we replace your meter with a new meter, it's going to be accurate. If your meter has, we've had some, we pulled some with a million gallons on them, two million gallons on them.
I had one that's seven million.
Wow.
I got it in my mouth.
So those, those meters are going to read slower. In other words, you're getting more water through the meter than it's actually reading. So when we put a cell read in there, you're going to have a more accurate accounting of what, of what kind of water consumption you have.
So to install that many meters, is that all city labor, or do we?
We would contract that out. Yeah. They, they can do that a lot faster than we can.
Okay. And then do we have labor savings ongoing after that, or is it pretty much the same as what?
So if we did 100% cell read, you're not going to, we're not going to have less public works employees or water employees.
All right, how many hours associated with that task, whatever?
How long does it take you to read meters every month?
Two full days.
Yeah. Re-reads is going to be another two days.
Cell read, you can eliminate a lot of the re-reads.
Yeah.
Is this the one, do we still have to drive around and pick it up, or is it all?
No.
So, okay, yeah, I thought at one time you'd be within a certain distance or something.
So we still have some of those in the system where you drive around, where you walk around with the wand, and then we still have some are manual reads, is that right?
Yeah. We have about 400 manuals, about 1,100.
400 manuals?
Yeah.
Four or six hundred.
Yeah, where you drive around, you go open the meter up, and you get the index, and you clean it off, and write it down, and then the nines, the sixes. And, yeah, so that's.
That's a significant number.
Yes. Yes. We, we did get a quote from Badger. We like that product, and we probably have, they probably about 30% of our inventory right now, inventory in the ground. And so that's, that's what we would recommend we go with again, is to do Badger again. I like it because it eliminate, it puts, it puts the onus on the customers, you know, I can't tell you how many times we flip the monitor around, and they use 300 gallons of water at 4:00 in the morning.
Well, I'm experiencing it, like, am I, because we have a smart meter.
Yeah.
And there was one day, my husband from the office goes, hey, Amy, did you fill up the pool on Wednesday? Like, yeah, how'd you know that? Because he was out of town.
Yeah.
He goes, it's on the app. I was like, what app? I got it even.
So, so we'll probably come to you guys, we have a few more invoices on the well rehabs that I want to pay. I think we're trying to get those then, we got a couple invoices in today, actually, so I thought I was going to have a number for you as to what that delta is between the bid and what we have left. But I talked to Jake Weber about it, and I think we've got some ways of, of paying for these meters without incurring some debt.
Okay, good. That'll make the process faster.
Yeah.
Do we have any other council comments? I'd like to just reiterate Craig's point. I think on the budget, I, I very much appreciate council working together. I know we all had some different ideas, we weren't on completely different pages, but we had some different things that we all felt we wanted, and we all recognized that rather than sticking by. rather than sticking by them and having a split vote, that coming together and making a compromise so that we could be all supportive of the budget was a very important thing to do as a council, and I appreciate that, that we were willing to work for that compromise, to work together for this next year. So I very much appreciate that, so. And your final comments?
Just to dovetail on that, I want to thank the staff for working on this. I think this process started in mid-June for them. I especially want to thank Chief West and Chief Lenore for, for their willingness to work and their patience with the process. Candy, Candy is the nuts and bolts of this thing, and I want to thank you for, I want to apologize to you for several times I yelled at you for things that you didn't do that I thought you did.
That woman's worth her weight in gold.
But, no, you, I think, I was telling a colleague that this is how the budget process, I think this is what the fathers envisioned when they had this. This is what the legislature had in mind when they did this. We had transparency, we showed you our work, we showed you our numbers, we came together, we had compromise. That's a rarity in today's political climate. Sometimes compromise is viewed, is viewed as a four-letter word. I think that we've shown that, that we can come together and produce a budget that's good for everyone, and that we all have a better understanding of each other in the process. And that's how you're going to represent your citizens well. So thank you, council, thank you, staff, and I'm, I'm happy that we can start the fiscal year.
Anything else?
Go tech.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move for adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? All right, thank you, we are adjourned at 7:31 PM.